Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call the city council meeting for January 5th, 2009 to order. First thing as always on the agenda is a roll call and determination of a quorum. Amber, if you would, please.
Here.
Sorry. Quaker? Olson?
Here.
Kroger?
Here.
Costello?
Here.
Hadcock?
Here.
Lucroy? Martinson?
Here.
Wyfembach?
Here.
Okrepke?
Here.
Chapman?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Amber. Just a reminder, if you have a cellphone or a pager, if you please turn that off, we'd appreciate that. Also, if you wish to speak to any item on the agenda, there are speaker request forms. They look like this. They're on the media table over to my right, to your left. If you could fill that out for us, including the item number, and turn that in to Amber down at the end of the dais, that way we'll make sure that we do not overlook you as we make our way through the agenda. Next, as always, is the invocation. And if you would all please rise for the invocation. Rob Crum from First Assembly of God Church, we giving the invocation. Do be followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, thank you for this evening, God, that we can come to you and invite your presence. God, I pray that every decision that's made in this room be led of you. We thank you for a brand-new year, Lord, and that you bless it. You bless the businesses and the people of Rapid City. You bless this council meeting and our mayor tonight, and that you just be present here. We thank you. We pray these things in the name that's above every name, the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the republic, which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, with the objective justice of our home.
Next thing as always on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any additional items that wish any of the council members or staff wish to add to the agenda? If so, please turn on your light. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Under alderperson items, I would like to add an item called RFP process for annual city auction. RFP process for annual city auction.
Okay, very good.
Sixty-five A, probably.
I'm just looking for a number. Do you have a number we can put that under?
Sixty-five A.
Sixty-five A, very good. Thank you. Sixty-five A, RFP, city auction. Any additional? Please turn on your light. Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just a correction. On the agenda, on the front page, just before item two, alcoholic beverage license application set for hearing, that should be January 20th, not January 19th. January 20th will be the date those are set for hearing.
Very good. January 20th. Okay, any additional items? Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
This is really a question, Mr. Mayor. Under one item, my name is spelled incorrectly. Does that make any difference?
Not to us.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you. Any additional items?
Doesn't require changing, though, does it?
No, I think we're fine. Thank you, Karen. Appreciate that. Any additional items? So far, we have a sixty-five A, which is an RFP, to talk about the RFP process for the city auction. And then also, just to note the correction, under the item just or the line just above item two, which says alcoholic beverage license application set for hearing on January 20th is a correct date, 2009, and should be nine, not eight. Correct? We don't want to go back to 2008. Everyone clear on that one? Okay. Any other additions or comments on the agenda? If not, the chair will look for a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, did we change the date there to 2009?
Yes.
Now, did we change it from the 19th to the 20th as well?
Yes, we did.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, very good. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Chair will look for a motion to approve the minutes of the December 15th, 2005, 2008 city council meeting. We have a motion and a second. Discussion on that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Now, under awards and recognitions, we do have a presentation from our sister city delegation from Nico City. Come on up, Chip.
Thank you very much. Sharon and I are the co-presidents of the Rapid City-Nico City Sister City Association. On behalf of Mayor Fumio Saito of Nico, he presented this gift to us to convey to you at our visit in October. So it's great pleasure that we're able to present you this gift from Mayor Saito and the folks in Nico City.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Yes, I put the present down at the end so we can look at it all night wondering what it is.
Open that, Kevin.
the time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at tonight's meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the council members present. Are there any issues not on the agenda that anyone from the audience would like to discuss? I do not have a speaker request form. Anyone from the audience. If not, we will move on. We are on to the non-public hearing items. These are items two through sixty-six. Two through sixty-six. The chair will look for a motion to open the public comment period on items two through fifty-nine, please. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. So we are on to the consent. Let's see, we're on to the public comment period. We do not have any speaker request forms on items two through fifty-nine. Let's just double-check with the audience. Two through fifty-nine. If not, the chair will look for a motion to close the public comment period. We have a motion and a second to close the public comment period on items two through fifty-nine. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Chair would ask if on the consent calendars, two through fifty-nine, if anyone wishes to have any of the items two through fifty-nine polled, I do see that we do need to poll item number six, please. If there's additional items, please turn on your light. Any additional items? Give everybody just a minute here. Let's go to Alderman Bill Okrepke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Number thirty-five.
Okay, item number thirty-five. Thank you. Any additional items to be polled from the consent calendars? Item two through fifty-nine. So far, we have items six and thirty-five. If not, the chair would look for a motion to approve the consent calendar, items two through fifty-nine inclusive, with the exception of items six and thirty-five, please. Do we have? We have a motion and a second for approval of the consent calendar, two through fifty-nine inclusive, with the exception of six and thirty-five. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We are on to item number six, and we will turn to our chairman of our Public Works Committee, Ron Kroger, to read that in, please.
Item number six is an appeal from Mike Paul for the denial of an exception request to allow the use of a not-conforming water service line. Not, okay. Allow the use of a not-conforming water service line and to direct city staff to install the water line and establish connection fee for the benefiting parties. I would move approval.
Okay, we're going to go to Jason Green for an explanation of why this was polled. Let's go to Jason Green, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The action from the Public Works Committee was to deny the ex-- was to recommend denial of the exception request, and then to direct the city staff to proceed with installing the conforming service line and to proceed with establishing the connection fee. So there's really two actions here. The first is to deny the exception request. The second is to direct the staff to proceed with installing the water line.
Was that the intent of the motion maker, or?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Jason, can we take both of those up in one action? Okay, very good. And did we have a second? Okay, we have a second. Everyone clear on the motion? The motion is to actually deny the appeal, but then to direct staff to go out and establish an assessment project. Okay, let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I thought at the Public Works meeting that we made two motions on this item. And this is just combining the two of them, so we only have one vote. Is I'm not understanding what we're doing?
That's correct. There were two motions at Public Works, and if the council was inclined, you could take it up as two separate motions. The way it's presented on the agenda, I think it's fine if you take it up as one. Either way, it works.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, very good. Robert, anything else you had to add? Let's go to Robert Ellis, our Public Works Director.
Yeah, I just would echo that that is what happened at Legal and Finance, or, excuse me, Public Works. And I will also add that the applicant was in support of this action.
Okay, very good. Everyone clear on the motion on the floor? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We're on to item number thirty-five, please. And Alderman Sam Quaker, our Chair of our Legal and Finance, could you please read that in?
Item thirty-five is approval of a travel request from Malcolm Chapman, Bill Okrepke, and Deb Hadcock to attend the 2009 National League of Cities Congressional City Conference in Washington, DC, March 12th through 19th, 2009, in the approximate amount of $9,410 I yield to the floor.
Move for approval. We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Bill Okrepke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And I remember going through the budget cycle, and we only allotted $25,000 in our travel budget for this year. And, you know, when I first signed up for it, it was just Malcolm going, and I thought we just needed a better representation of from Rapid City going to the League of Cities to support you going. I know you're going to go to the, to meet with the congressional delegation there and to have enough, just to have more than just you representing the city as opposed to maybe a couple more would be a good thing. And so that was one of the main reasons why I went to go on this, besides getting the training and doing the, all the other stuff we've been talking about throughout the past couple, three years while we go to these League of Cities. I see that now there's three, and I'm looking at, you know, almost $17,000 out of a $25,000 budget. I'm just wondering, maybe I should buy and let Deb go.
Okay. Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate Mr. Okrepke's concern about the budget. I just wanted to check. I assume that the amount that includes, um, sorry, I got into the next item. I withdraw my comments.
Okay, very good. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to make sure I understand this, I believe that just thirty-five was polled from the agenda, thirty-six, which is the other trip, has been approved. The combination of those two trips, as Alderman Okrepke said, you know, does, is a substantial amount in comparison to the $25,000 travel budget that was authorized. My view on this, and I've been asked in the past to bring forward travel budget concerns to the budget process, and that's what I did this year when I and others led the effort to reduce the annual travel allocation from $60,000 to $25,000. It is worth noting that we're five days into the new year, and we're spending approximately two-thirds of the annual allocation. And I hope that this doesn't mean that there will be a supplemental appropriation coming through. I also believe when it comes to the National League of Cities trip in Washington, because it's a trip that's every year, there really should be a couple of criteria. One is we really need no more than two people going. And also, those who haven't really had a chance to go before should be allowed to go. In the case of the three people on the, on this item, all three have been to approximately a similar number of trips. So I think the first come, first serve is probably the fairest way to do it. And I appreciate Alderman Okrepke's offer to remove himself from the trip. But I think in all fairness, him and Alderman Chapman should be the ones that go. So those are my, those are my comments. I would support sending two on this trip. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the comments. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since Sam has referenced item number thirty-six, that's the item I was really concerned about. My understanding is that this amount also includes some money for Robert Ellis, who is going in behalf of the team as we move forward with gaining additional information, as well as reporting on the things that Rapid City is doing in behalf of Green Cities activity. So my understanding is that this would be some from the, from the Public Works budget, and you can correct me, Robert Ellis, if that's not so.
Yep, that is correct, Karen. Thank you. We're on item number thirty-five, please. Let's go to Alderman Lloyd Lucroy. Motion on the floor is for approval.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I just wanted to respond to Mr. Okrepke's comment. I think the people that have signed up are good people. They're going to represent us well. They have a plan to go down there. The other one is, we got some new council members going to the Green Cities and our Public Works structure. So I think it's all appropriate. I've been to Washington for the last two years in a row. I would have liked to gone this year also, but with the way things have been at work, I needed to be here at home. And I do have a YF conference in October that I plan on attending, just to let the council know, but that'll be in October. So that's why I've sat back. But I do approve, and I think it's great that you people have signed up to go, to represent us. I know you're going to have an agenda down there when you meet with your congressional leaders, and I wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Motion on the floor is for approval. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
I appreciate Bill's comments in the sense that I don't think anybody needs to bow out. These classes are different than we went to last year. They're not the same classes, I believe, in education. I think travel is not a frivolous thing to do. I think education, again, is a big reason why we're going. They're different classes. It's networking. It's networking with our congressional people, with our people that have helped me, and many of the things that I have got done for our city, for downtown, for infrastructure, and other things. So, Bill, I appreciate you thinking that only maybe, I guess I didn't get where you're going, but long story short, I don't think both of us going, and it sounds like you're taking different classes than I am there, and education is very important. But I think in the end, what's going to happen, because education is important to this council, there will be more travel being done because there will be more classes needed in order to get better educated for this council. So in the end, I think we'll probably be supplementing. That might be a disappointment to some people, but if education is the point why we're doing this, traveling, it's a positive. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go. Everybody wants to talk on this. Okay, let's go to Ron Wyfembach. Alderman Ron Wyfembach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make, I'm not sure if continuing these items, well, thirty-six we've already passed, right? Can't reconsider it. And the only reason I would be interested in is continuing is to make some kind of a plan. I mean, we do have a limited budget. We're looking at at least, what, twelve, maybe, $12,000 to $13,000 coming out of the budget right away, which is over half of it. And I'd just like to see a plan that we had laid out for the council's travel for the 2009 year. This is going to shoot the budget in half already. Somehow let this one slip by, but if it would be a problem to continue this, I guess I can vote on it tonight and just, what if anybody would second a continuation motion? I'm not sure when this has to be paid or not, so we can discuss some sort of a plan that goes into the future. Just shooting the budget in half right off the first five days, I'm not sure if I'm prepared to do that. So if somebody would entertain that motion.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question here, just noting that both these conferences, one of them seven days and the other one's eight, and that's quite an increase in number of days than what we've had in the past for National League of Cities. I mean, normally it's been like four days probably at the max. So is there any reason why, in these times, that the National League of Cities is extending the conference time on these? Does anybody know? Because that certainly adds to the cost of the travel.
I don't see a light coming on, Ron. We'll see if anybody takes you up on that. Anything else?
No, I can certainly support this. I mean, I just, I just think that, you know, the people that are going need to be aware that this is over half of the budget that we've allotted for this year. And so the next trips that need to be taken, I would hope that they would make sure and check with all the rest of the council members to make sure that they're, don't have a wish or a desire to go to those, so they can be the ones on the list that we approve versus the ones that are going to this one here. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Patty Martinson.
I did want to point out that the reason that this is done so quickly is because it's cheaper, it's cheaper to do it as early as possible rather than post doing it later when it's more expensive. So we're actually saving money by doing this so early. And the only other major conference I can think of is in Orlando, again, for the, at the end of this year. So if there's any other trip between now and then, maybe they should think about it, you know, right now, then we can plan ahead. If there's any additional trips that the council members are considering going.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Alderman Erin Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to point out that the actual dates for the conference on item thirty-six are the 18th through the 22nd. So I'm not sure how, if that's just a typo, or?
I think it is.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to clear that up.
Okay, thank you. And let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Actually, I'll be there less time. I just haven't put that in. They had to put the full amount in there because I wanted to go for sure for the classes. So that might cut down on some of the expense as well. I go there for the education, and those first two days, you're in class the whole time, and those are the main reason why I go. They have some economy classes this year, and some things that are really beneficial to what's happening right now in the economy. So, long story short, I probably won't be there for the full amount of time. So that'll cut down the amount of the conference for me as well. So that might help. So other people want to go, or I'm not opposed if somebody else would like to go that hasn't gone, and this council is going to pick and choose. I, you can take me off. I'm okay. But I'd like to go because of those two days of education.
Very good. Motion on the floor is for approval. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyfembach.
I guess this is kind of out of line, but I was wondering if it was, be too late to reconsider thirty-six.
Actually, we're on thirty-five. You can take it.
All right, okay. I'll make a motion to continue, number thirty-five.
Okay, we have a substitute motion. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a substitute motion, a second. Discussion on the continuation motion only. We're going to take up only continuation motion only. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Erin Costello.
I guess my question falls in. Oops. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my question falls in line with what was said earlier about registration deadlines. If we continue this, will this affect a registration deadline that will raise the fees that we end up paying in the end?
I'm going to look, I believe it will, but I'm not positive. Okay, I'm looking. People are shaking their heads, yes.
Then I would not be in favor of continuing.
Okay. Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Lloyd Lucroy.
Thank you, Mayor. Erin asked the question I was going to. I'm not going to be in favor of the continuation either. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Motion on the floor is to continue this. I assume that was for two weeks. Is that correct, Alderman Wyfembach? Okay, very good. Motion on the floor is to continue this to the next council meeting. Seeing no further lights. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Let's take a roll call, please.
Quaker?
Aye.
Olson?
No.
Kroger?
No.
Costello?
No.
Hadcock?
No.
Lucroy?
No.
Martinson?
No.
Wyfembach?
Aye.
Okrepke?
No.
Chapman?
Okay, motion fails on a eight to two vote. We are back to the original motion, which is a motion for approval. Any further discussion on that motion? Any further discussion? Okay, let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I heard a couple of things in the earlier discussion tonight. One is, as I heard, that there would, it appears that there would likely be a request for a supplemental appropriation later this year. And I just want to lay my cards on the table and state that I believe that that would be, that would not be appropriate. And secondly, I, we do have two council members that had requested prior to the deadline, and a third that, who requested more recently. All three have had a fairly similar amount of travel. And so if it was a new council member that kind of, or someone who hadn't traveled a lot that came and requested, I think it would be reasonable to send, you know, to send that person instead of one of the others. But I think it's reasonable to send just two, and I think we should accept Council President Hancock's offer to withdraw from the, from the trip. So I think that that's, that's fair. So if she's willing to offer to withdraw, I think she can go ahead and do that now, and we can continue with this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Actually, I'll be going with less time, is what I said. And if somebody else wanted to go, had hadn't gone, and we were going to make a issue out of this, then I wouldn't be going. But I'm not going to go just because someone thinks that at this time, picking and choosing in it to be me, I think, is inappropriate. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, just about everybody spoke at least once or twice here. I'm going to look down the line here. Alderman Lucroy, you spoke once, so you still have the ability to speak. Alderman Lloyd Lucroy.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the people that have signed up for this are very experienced council people, and that's who we want down there in Washington, not only to go to the classes, but to talk to our congressional leaders, and that's what we want. And that's who's actually signed up for it. It's not the amount of who's all went how many times. It's, it's who do we need down there to express what the city needs? And I think we've got a good, good three that are going. And with that, it's a first come, first served, as far as I'm concerned, on travel. So if you, I'm ready to move on with this tonight and vote it forward. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Alderman Wyfembach, I have you speaking twice to this motion. Is that correct? Have you only spoken once to this? Okay, very good. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyfembach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make, make light of the fact again, that this is over half our budget. Had I been prepared, ahead of time, I guess, to know that, that we had a game plan that made sense, then I, you know, I would have no problem. I wanted to continue it for the simple reason that I wanted to look at the plan, to see what, why the reason we needed to have three people go into this conference, and how it would fit into our plan for 2009. Excuse me. I could support my council, my fellow council people that want to go. I'll take trust in the fact that you're going to make good use of this time and this money that's going to be used to travel there. So, but I did, I did want to make sure that this is going to be over half our budget. I wasn't aware of the fact that we were going to have five people go into conferences right off the bat this first quarter. So, and I'm hoping that our, as a council, we can come together and make a better plan in the future, that so everybody involved knows what's going on, what our plan is, what's the reasoning for us to take these trips, and how it's going to provide for our constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes, I believe, with one no from Alderman Quaker. Is that correct? Anyone else who know? Okay, very good. Thank you, everyone. That does take us to the end of the consent calendar. calendar. We are on to the non-consent calendar, items sixty through sixty-six, and the chair will look for a motion to open the public comment period on items sixty through sixty-six. Thank you. Do we have a second? We have a second. We have a motion and a second. Discussion on that motion. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We do have a speaker request form from Dick Phipps on item number sixty. He is with Black Hills Coin and Stamp. And Mr. Phipps, I know who you are, but if you could just come up and identify yourself for the record, and during this period, we always do allow three minutes, so if you just keep in mind the lights up here when it turns red, then your time is up. Thank you.
Dick Phipps is my name, coin collector. Fun times with coins, and we started the Black Hills Coin Club back in two thousand and five. We're up to forty-some members now, and we're just having a nice time in the community. The Coin Club does quite a few things for different organizations, nonprofit. We did some stuff for the high school. We did some stuff for Jefferson. Do quite a bit of stuff. Mainly what I'm concerned with tonight is ordinance number five, four, four, four. And I feel this ordinance in its current form is forcing dealers and collectors of gems, minerals, coins, and currency to have to go through DCI background check plus finger and palm print screening. Now, this could eliminate some businesses in Rapid City, because it's my understanding that if you've ever had any kind of problems all the way back to day one, you could actually not get your license, which in return means you couldn't be in business. And that in itself is a concern to the club, but it also going to eliminate coin and stamp shows in Rapid City, because we have a good following in Rapid City. We've had the state show two of the last four years here in Rapid City. We are working on two thousand and ten right now. Now, put yourself in a coin dealer's position from Sioux Falls or from Aberdeen or Watertown. None of these towns has this ordinance. In fact, Rapid City is the only city in the state that has anything close to what we're talking about here. So, are we going to ask our dealers and our business people from throughout the state and also the region to come in here and fill out a DCI background check, do palm prints, fingerprints? You know, would you do it? I wouldn't do it. I think I can see something happening. We're going to end up with our garage sale down at the Civic Center in February. Are we going to go down there and get palm prints and fingerprints? In our opinion, this is not a good ordinance. It's been on the books for a lot of years. It's never been challenged properly, hasn't been enforced properly. That's all I got to say. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Phipps. My understanding is, I believe the motion on item number sixty, which is the ordinance referring to, will be continued tonight, so we can actually address some of your concerns. I believe that will be the motion. Okay, very good. Thank you. I do not have any additional speaker request forms on any items sixty through sixty-six inclusive. Anyone else from the audience wish to speak to any of these items? If not, the chair will look for a motion to close the public comment period on item sixty through sixty-six. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Discussion on that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Let's go to our legal and finance chair, Alderman Sam Quaker, and if you could read in item number sixty, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number sixty is second reading of ordinance fifty-four, forty-four, an ordinance to provide for criminal history records checks for certain business licenses by amending various sections of Title V of the Rapid City Municipal Code. This was continued from the December fifteen, two thousand and eight council meeting. Think the recommendation is, or probably go ahead and continue this again. For the sake of discussion, I'm going to offer a motion to continue this item for sixty days and allow a committee to be formulated to review the language of this ordinance and possibly bring forward other language as well. So, that is my motion.
Okay, do we have a second? Do we have a second? Or another motion, please? You'll second the motion, Karen? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a question for the chief. Do we enforce this? I mean, I, it's the first I've ever heard of this, this license for gem and mineral dealers. I could see a, a whole issue of licensees going out for everybody who sells anything in this town, so.
Okay, I'm going to go to Steve Allender. Just a reminder for the council, the motion on the floor is to continue, but I think that's an appropriate question. Chief Allender.
Thank you, Mayor. The answer is yes. We've enforced the, the background check ordinance, but it's been strictly an electronic background check up to this point. So, what's new is fingerprinting. I believe the city attorney can address the out-of-town vendors for shows.
My concern would be gem and mineral dealers. Can we eliminate them from this ordinance?
Let me go to, it's all right, Mr. Wyffenbach. Let's go to Jason Green, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To, to Mr. Wyffenbach's question, can the council do that? Yes, you can, but if you're not going to do a background check on people that the city puts their stamp of approval on, my recommendation is that you stop doing that and eliminate the license entirely.
Okay. Mr. Wyffenbach, you still have the floor, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to eliminate gem and mineral dealers from licensing requirements.
Okay. Jason, we're going to treat this probably, well, wait a second here. Procedurally, we have a motion on the floor to continue. Help me out here, Jason. As far as going to amend that motion, it's really not amending the motion on the floor. Help me out here, Jason. What's the appropriate action here?
Now, the, the motion as presented, I believe, would be out of order, because you have a continuation motion. You would need a main motion on the floor before you could vote to amend it. The other thing I would point out is that if you do want to remove metals and gems entirely from the licensing scheme, you're going to need another ordinance to do that. You can't do it within this one.
Okay. Mr. Wyffenbach, you still have the floor, sir.
Can I make a substitute motion then?
Sure.
My substitute motion would be remove gem and mineral dealers from licensing requirements.
Okay. I'm going to go back to Jason Green, because I think Jason just stated that we can't do it within this ordinance.
That's right. This ordinance has, is specific to background checks, and that is only one section within the metals and gems ordinance. You'd need an ordinance to repeal the entire section on licensing metals and gems dealers. So, I, if, if that's where the council would like to go, my recommendation would be that you dispose of this ordinance one way or another, either by approval or continuation, and then after that item is, is done, take up another action to direct my office to prepare an ordinance to repeal the metals and gems licensing.
That'd be fine. I'd be fine with continuing it. We can move. I just, I don't see the reasoning of having a committee and going through all that when we can simplify it, and, but we'll continue it. I'm fine with that.
Okay. Okay, further discussion. Just for clarification, the motion on the floor is to continue this item for sixty days and to form a committee to look at the language within the proposed ordinance. Is that correct, Alderman Quaker? Okay, very good. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
There are just a couple of questions. I know we're continuing this, but what are the certain businesses? I'm sorry, my computer's not working, and when you said certain businesses, what are those certain businesses? Because why I'm saying that is collectors, I think, are a little bit different than people that get business licenses for this. And if we're talking about collectors that come in town for jam coins, that's different than a business license. And I guess I, and I talked to you about this today, Jason, city, state, and federal rules. What are those, and do they do background or anything to do with business license, not collector licenses?
Okay. I'm going to let Jason answer that, but before we continue, remember the motion on the floor is a continuation motion. If you want to have debate on the main motion, we need to dispose of the motion that's in front of us. So, I'm going to let Jason answer that, but I'm going to remind the council, the motion on the floor is a continuation motion. Okay? Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. The, this ordinance would not apply to an individual collector. It only would apply to people who are in the business of trading in precious metals and gems. So, they would have to comply with all state and federal requirements. It would be sales tax licenses and things of that nature, apart from our ordinance. Our ordinance protects local people from folks who may want to be in this business surreptitiously.
Okay, and how about the certain businesses? I mean, how do we end up with coin dealers and, and that kind of thing, I guess? Why is it on there?
Jason?
I, I think I can best answer that by pointing out what the other businesses are. They are pawnbroker, secondhand dealer, precious, or private security guard, taxi operator. They are businesses that past councils have determined present a health and safety risk to the community if they are not regulated in some manner. That's how we got to the point of requiring a license.
Okay, so we will address the health and safety. Now, my other question is, why sixty days? Can you do this within, I don't think we need a committee to do this. I think you can take a look at it. Do you need sixty days?
Jason?
I intend to present recommendations to the legal and finance committee at the next meeting in accordance with the prior direction from either the committee or the council. I forget which. Chief Allender and I have met once on this. We're going to meet again tomorrow, and we intend to have recommendations for the council to consider.
And I guess that would be my substitute motion, is to go back to what the original, to do what we were supposed to do and not do the sixty days, because you were ready to do this. Did we put ice cream vendors that was in there? And I guess that was the main reason why, health and safety is why this came to be a particular issue, is because of ice cream vendors and checking backgrounds on people that have health and safety issues to do with kids was my biggest issue, and then it brought up some other stuff with this. But, long story short, I just wanted to make sure why that came about, and so the man in the audience, he knew what to look up when we were coming with this to legal and finance. So, so he had some type of information why it was coming and being continued.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Alderman Bill O'Krepke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. If you can indulge me in a couple of questions, so that I have a better understanding. I may want to have another motion to, as opposed to the, as opposed to this.
Give her a try, and if you could just try and keep her a little bit brief.
Thank you. I, I'd like to know, first of all, who was, who generated the requirement to include the gems?
Okay, let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
The only answer I can give is that the council did at some point through an ordinance that was enacted. I don't know what prompted the council to act previously, though.
Okay, so we don't know what the purpose is of, the purpose of putting, including the gems into this ordinance?
Just for clarification, I believe that it's already in ordinance currently. It's not adding, we're not adding anything by adopting this ordinance. Gems and coin dealers, I believe, by ordinance are already included. Is that a fair statement, Mr. Green?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And Mr. O'Krepke, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you, then. Appreciate the indulgence. Let me, let me make a substitute motion if I can. I would like to disapprove or deny this ordinance, or disapprove this ordinance, and direct the staff to come forward with a new ordinance that, that reflects what we really truly want in, in terms of what Alderman Hadcock was talking about as well, and remove the, the gem. So, if we can redo the whole thing and have the, the city attorney bring forward something to legal and finance in his early inconvenience.
Let me make just a, a recommendation. I believe the appropriate motion would be to just actually send this back to legal and finance and ask the staff to actually look at amending it, instead of actually denying and starting through the process as far as advertising. If you just send it back to legal and finance, I think it does the same thing.
Well, and that, that would be my motion. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just don't want to see it continued and, and have it to go on and on and on. Let's try, see if we can get, get this thing done and over with. So, I'd like to see that happen.
Okay. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a second substitute motion and a second, and that motion is to send this back to legal and finance and actually ask staff to actually look at the language. Okay, very good. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderwoman, let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger.
Thank you, Mayor. Jason, you, you stated you are, you have a recommendation that you're going to bring forward to legal and finance. I guess, is there any reason why you can't give that recommendation tonight, so we know, you know, I, you know, I'd feel, I don't have a problem continuing to the next legal and finance meeting, which is going to be next week. But, and hopefully you'll have something that deals with gems and everything that, that's going to do the changes that we want. And if that's the case, why can't you give us that information tonight, and then we could just move on? It, it shortened the timeframe by two weeks to, to a month.
Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I haven't finalized what the recommendation is. I'm meeting with Chief Allender again tomorrow, and he and I are going to discuss the alternatives that we're going to bring forward and what the recommendation from the staff will be at that time. So, the reason I can't give it to you tonight is because we haven't finalized it.
Thank you, Jason, and I can support the motion on the floor, continuing this to legal and finance, many.
Thank you. Very good. Motion on the floor is to send this item back to our next legal and finance committee meeting. Let's go to Alderwoman Patty Martenson.
Thank you, Mayor, and a question for Jason Green. Is one of the parts of the discussion would be, because I know one of the concerns has with any person who currently owns a license, they have already a felony, and they would, might be brought up when it comes up for renewal. Is there a chance you can discuss a possible, like a statute of limitations, how old the felony can be taken into consideration?
Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
We can certainly have that discussion at legal and finance, yes.
Anything else, Mayor? Okay. Motion on the floor is to send this item back to legal and finance and have staff take a look at the language and present it back at the next legal and finance. Any further discussion? Further discussion? Seeing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Item sixty-one, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Item sixty-one is confirmation of appointment of Eddie Repkama and Batul Morelli to the Civic Center Board for three years. Yield to the floor.
Move for approval. Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd, I'd like to divide the question. For a simple reason, I'll be abstaining from one of these appointments.
That's fine. So, the chair will rule that there's, there's basically a request for division, which, is there any objection to the division? Any? Okay, if not, what we will do is we will take up the appointment of Eddie Repkama first, and then Batul, Batul Morelli second. So, Jason, we probably need a new motion. Is that correct? Okay, so the chair will look for a motion for, to approve the confirmation, or approve the appointment of Eddie Repkama to the Civic Center Board. Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In conversation with a number of folks, I had voted against this, this motion originally in committee, and it was because of during the holidays, I'd had, not had an opportunity to talk to some people whose views I felt were important to have shared. And in addition, I had not had a chance to talk to Jason Green, our city attorney, who further defines the appropriate kind of votes in behalf on various boards and so forth. And in defining that, Jason assured me that, that the votes were in compliance with South Dakota law, and so I am comfortable with this appointment.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be abstaining from this vote. I have a business relationship with one of Mr. Repkama's businesses, so, thank you.
Very good. We'll note that. Thank you for that. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is to confirm the appointment of Eddie Repkama to the Civic Center Board for a three-year term. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now, the chair will look for a motion to confirm the appointment of Batul Morelli to the Civic Center Board for a three-year term.
Move, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I had asked earlier today if, if regarding the rodeo, if Mr. Sutton still has his offices in the, in the Radisson and still stays in the, in the Radisson during the stock show, and if that's free room and board are reduced or reduced price or regular price. I think it's a fair, fair question to ask, and I, I would like to, to know the answer to that, and if the answer is, is that there is a relationship, a business relationship there, then if the board member is abstaining from votes relating to the, the contract with, for the Central States Fair and the rodeo.
Yep. I guess I'll ask if anybody actually knows specifically the questions that Alderman Quaker referred to. I believe, and I'm going to try and wing this. My understanding is that Mr. Sutton does rent rooms during the rodeo, but he does not have a permanent office there. I believe he used a, a, a renter or a tenant like everyone else that rents during the rodeo, but I don't believe there's any permanent relationship as far as an office. And to your question, Alderman Quaker, as far as the discounted rate, I have no idea. That would be a, that would be a private discussion between the owners of the Radisson and Mr. Sutton, and I don't think we'd have the, unless someone wanted to present that, either Mr. Sutton or the folks from the Radisson, I don't know how we could determine that. that. But you still have the floor, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. There have been a lot of discussions over the years about, about conflicts of interest. And my understanding is, is that people should abstain from voting if there's an appearance of a, of a conflict of interest, an appearance, which is one of the reasons why I vote, I abstain on, on votes that my employer is involved in, even if it's a different division of the, of the company. So I, I think it's a fair question to ask, and, and it's an answer that I would like to have before this appointment is, is voted on because I think we need to know if, if there's any perception, because concerns have been, have been raised. And I think that it's fair that we have the answers to those concerns before the vote on this nomination is, is, is taken. And if I can have a commitment from this board member that any involvement, you know, there'll be abstentions, then, you know, I think that it's probably fair to proceed, but we may not be able to have the answer to that tonight. So maybe, maybe we need to continue this item. But I, I asked the question earlier, and unfortunately, it doesn't look like I have a, have a complete, a complete answer. And if we're going to have a standard to conflicts of interest, it needs to apply to everyone fairly and equitably. And I yield to the floor and see what the rest of the council thinks, but I think we probably need to continue this to get more information.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to continue. I'm going to go just for clarification to Mr. Green and just, I want you to speak just briefly on the standards of the requirements for abstention because there was a statement that if there's a perception, and I'm not sure that that's actually the standard.
Perception is not the standard. Standard is a direct pecuniary interest, an indirect pecuniary interest, or a direct or indirect personal interest. And there are specific categories that those things fall into. They've been defined by the Supreme Court. As Alderwoman Olson indicated, I've been asked several times to, to look into those issues. I've done that. I don't believe that, that it costs, that Ms. Morelli's service on the board constitutes a conflict of interest with anything involving the Black Hill Stock Show.
Okay, and that standard is established in state statute?
The standard is established in state statute and also in case law from the South Dakota Supreme Court, particularly the case Hannig versus Winter.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
Jason was very helpful in my conversation with him in defining this so that I could understand it better. Jason, you did describe something that made this more clear to me as to how it lays under South Dakota law. And I don't think you've said that this evening in, in the same kind of more simple lay language. For those of us, for those of us who are not lawyers.
Are you asking him to be a little bit more simplistic?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Green?
I'm, I'm not sure if I'm going to hit exactly what we discussed this morning, Ms. Olson, but I'll give it a shot. This is not a situation where a member of a board votes on a contract that results in the expenditure of public funds directly to the board member or to their business. At best, at best, it's a benefit that is received by the board member, that's received by everybody else in the community that's in business at the time that the event occurs in the community. I don't believe that that rises to the level of direct pecuniary interest or indirect pecuniary interest as defined by the South Dakota Supreme Court.
Okay, Karen, is that what you're hoping to hear?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Anything else, ma'am? Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Olson. I'm sorry. Deb Haddock.
I get a new name. I'm going to speak because this was one of the issues. I was liaison for the Civic Center, and me and Mr. Repkama and Batul and Jason and that board have extensive discussion on this, and I'm talking extensive. And I said the same thing, and Jason reassured me that there was no conflict or interest. And I guess my biggest issue with this is this is one item that they vote on out of all the items on the Civic Center, and we're discussing about not putting her on a board for one issue out of the thousands of issues that are on there. And I think that's wrong because being on that board and seeing how hard they worked and this board this year has done some, some major, major things for the Civic Center, and I'm proud of what they've done. And again, if you're going to pick on one person and one issue, I just think it's wrong. She's done thousands of other things on there that have been great, and now we're going to question her being adult, that she has conflict interest, and she's not saying that she might do something with the rodeo because it might be inappropriate. And we shouldn't put her on this board because of that. I think that's wrong. Again, she does good things for this board and has done very positive things for the Civic Center, and I'm, I don't have any issues with this, and I don't think we should continue it.
Thank you. Just a reminder, the motion on the floor is for approval. Discussion, additional discussion on the motion. Let's go to Alderwoman Bill O'Krepeki.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I need a little bit more simplistic answer than what Alderman Olson had. If, if, if she owns the hotel, the Radisson, through her husband, and she votes in favor or dis, or not in favor of this, that's not a conflict of interest?
Let's go to Jason Green, our City Attorney.
No.
Then I agree with Alderman Haddock. This is, this is just an easy answer for me.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Lloyd LaCorre.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the confusion on this is, you know, once someone says there's a conflict of interest, we automatically step back and try to, as elected officials, abstain from everything that's possible that comes before us once that accusation's made. I think this is two different entities, and so we, as council members, do have that perception that anytime, there seems to be a perception, we seem to abstain or we step back. Or we consult our, our city attorney, and we go with whatever he recommends. And our city attorney is pretty conservative, so it's usually we hold back and abstain. But I've seen Batul as being a liaison to the Civic Center Board. They operate very well. I think there's no reason to be discussing this right now. I think there is no conflict of interest. I think we should just move on and vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do think there is something important that we're discussing here in terms of boards and commissions throughout our community. I do believe that if you want to have capable people serving on boards and commissions, and we do, they are necessarily involved with the community because that's one of the things that often brings people to boards and commissions. And we want to continue to have capable people serving in those capacities. And my concern is just to let people know that as you serve on a board, you can always reference, you can always recuse yourself if there's a question about a particular issue, because we don't want to eliminate these capable people from our important leadership positions in our community. And the way you do that is by allowing them and recommending that they recuse themselves. And so I know that on every board, there probably is some occasion when there could be something in which they did have a financial interest. But Jason has assured me, this is our city attorney, that that's the, the level of criteria that applies to this, and so I'm satisfied. It doesn't eliminate everyone from every board. It just simply means that those who serve on those occasions where there is some financial interest, those are questions they don't vote on. And I think it isn't a matter of, as a matter of principle, every time that occasion occurs, those folks should recuse themselves. But I don't think that eliminates that individual from serving on a board because those are the kinds of people we do need in our community, stepping forward with their leadership skills, their background, and their support of the community. So I am very comfortable with that. And Jason, I think, has defined it pretty carefully as to what it means under South Dakota law, and I'm willing to, I respect that. And I feel certain that in the future, if there's any question about it, he will talk to our boards and commissions about this, and because we don't want to eliminate capable people from all the boards and the commissions that serve this community. But on the other hand, we also want them serving the best interests of our citizens, and I'll continue to be interested and concerned about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Item number 62, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 62 is approve, approve the removal of the requirement for council authorization to solicit proposals for design services from the CIP project approval process. Yield to the floor.
Okay, can we, can we have a motion, please?
I'd move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. And just for important clarification, in your blue package, you should have a copy of the resolution. On top should say item number 62, January 5th, 2009, resolution amending the process for approval of capital improvement projects. Okay, with that, discussion on the motion for approval of the resolution. Let's go to Alder, Alderwoman Deb Haddock.
Robert, can you explain why this came about so the general public has information of, of the process and why this has come forward?
Yes, absolutely. This, this is actually coming forward from my office. We were analyzing the number of steps that we have to take to get a project from concept to completion, and it is a fairly lengthy process. And we tried to look at a way to streamline that and building on what I believe is trust between the council and the staff that has developed. It was apparent to me that this is an obvious choice for removal from the steps, and that is the city council authorizing the solicitation of proposals for design work. There are a number of steps before that and after that, where council has the authority to either approve or deny the various steps along the project, the course of the project through completion. So in my mind, this was the logical step that could streamline projects, assist my staff in getting all the projects that we do have planned for the year through, through the mill and benefiting the public in a more timely fashion.
Okay.
So just one question. So in this process, you still feel that the public in this process is very transparent so they could basically figure it out and know that the transparency is there still eliminating this process?
Absolutely.
This particular step?
Robert?
Absolutely, I do. There are still six other times that a project would come forward to the council for their approval with the deletion of this step.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I voted against this at, at committee, and I've since had an opportunity to speak with department heads and others in the community, and I support it. I was just asking our city attorney if this is specific to CIP, and I understand that CIP runs across, it could run potentially across all, you know, a great number of city projects, so I understand that. I, I support our department heads in being able to make those decisions, but I, it would be my hope that if a project came forward that they wanted to get done, then that project potentially could be controversial, that they would still come to the council, give the council heads up so that the council would be in the loop as opposed to just getting that later in the process of a design that's already hanging out there. So I support the motion on the floor, I support the resolution that's been drafted, but we just ask department heads to be mindful of coming to the city council, at least from a heads-up standpoint.
Very good. Thank you for your comments. Let's go to Alderwoman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. And if you don't mind, I'd like to just briefly state what these steps are, and I'm going to explain, help explain why I'm voting for the recommendation to remove a step. There are currently eight steps, and this would take us down to seven steps. And step number one is CIP committee project approval. Step number two is city council approval of CIP projects. Step number three is what we're voting on to remove tonight, and that is approval of authorization to solicit design services. Step number four is city council approval of the design services agreement. Five is approval of the project construction advertising authority. Six is city council approval of award for construction contracts. Seven is city council approval of construction change orders, and eight is city council approval of final construction payment. Now, anybody who's watched my votes over the last seven years know that I'm, knows I'm all about oversight. However, in, in this case, I, I think that we have, you know, with eight steps, we'll still have a fair amount of oversight with, with seven. The only thing that I see here that could be a potential problem is, is a future public works director down the line deciding to, instead of doing things in-house, if possible, automatically just soliciting design services from consultants. Now, I believe that our public works director currently would not do that, especially with the budget being as tight as it is. So I think that we, we can certainly trust that this will be handled appropriately. That is probably the only risk that I would see in the long term, but the reality is, is that as soon as it came to step number four, if the council didn't like the proposal, they could turn it down, and after a few of those, who's ever public works director would probably realize that it would be best to garner council support before, or to double check before soliciting consultants if it can be done in-house less expensively. So I support the motion on the floor, and I appreciate Robert Ellis for, for bringing this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for Mr. Ellis. Mr. Ellis, this does not eliminate any competitive bidding process. It just...
No, absolutely not. It doesn't. Our RFPs, when we do solicit proposals, they go out to everybody that's in our database. There's probably 18 to 20 people that are in that database. Every time we do an RFP, they go to every one of those members. Thank you.
Yep, anything else? Motion on the floor is for approval. Yes, ma'am. Okay, let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson. Let me see if I can bring you up here, Karen. There you go. Actually, I think, just remember, there is, there is an item later on the agenda talking about all of our equipment up here, so...
I'm just in support of this. I think the authority, this is about authorizing, going out, and I think our public works directors, that we will, both Mr. Ellis and any future employees, I would certainly say that we would hire someone who would have the wisdom, that would be part of the reason we'd hire this individual. So I, I'm in support of the motion.
Thank you. Let's go to, nope, okay, very good. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? I'd just like to thank Robert and the staff for bringing this forward. I think it's always good to look at ways to streamline the process and still maintain the transparency. So with that, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We're on to item number 63, please.
Item 63 is to approve a request to continue the discussion of public safety and maintenance concerns at Countryside Mobile Home Court on East St. Patrick Street to the January 14, 2009 Legal and Finance Committee meeting. The motion at Legal and Finance had been to continue that item. I believe that this item probably doesn't need to be on tonight's agenda, but since it's on tonight's agenda, I would offer a motion to proceed with the Legal and Finance Committee's request to continue this item to the January 14 committee meeting.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to, in essence, send this back to Legal and Finance. And discussion on that motion, let's go to Alderwoman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I wasn't in on a Legal and Finance Committee meeting, but I, I had some concern of this area because it is in my ward, and there is a lot of elderly people that live in this area, and understanding the circumstances that they're going to be up against, if they're not getting snow removal in, in this mobile home court, it, it could be a huge health hazard. And between now and then, between now and the 14th of January, there could be a snowstorm or blizzard that could be the detriment of someone in that community. And I'm hoping that maybe if I direct a question to our city attorney about the possibility of providing some snow service there and assessing that to that mobile home court, just to provide safety for those people. There's a lot of elderly people that live in that trailer court.
Okay. Before I go to Jason Green, I think the answer is, as always, the city will make sure that if there's anything that is a health or a safety issue, we will address it. I'm not sure that we can actually go and actually assess it, but I will tell you, if, if we have a major blizzard, we'll make sure that there's access in and out of that trailer court. Let's go to Jason Green, our City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. The city certainly can provide access to the public right-of-way, but providing snow removal services on private property would be an inappropriate use of city taxpayer dollars. city taxpayer dollars. If there were an emergency situation that arose that prevented the fire department, the ambulance, the police from getting into it, I don't think it would be inappropriate to call out the street department and have them run a plow down there to provide emergency access.
Who would be in charge of that emergency? Declaration, would that be the mayor, or could I do that?
I believe that, you know, if there was an ambulance call and they couldn't get there, I think that whoever the on-duty supervisor in the fire department was at the time could call for that assistance from the street department.
That'd be my concern, because it'd be too late at that point. I mean, our response time is anywhere like three to seven minutes, and if that's gonna add twenty minutes, and I just have some concern if we get a level of snow that I want some assurance that those people aren't gonna get snowed in there. I mean, if I gotta go plow myself, I guess that's what I'll have to do.
Well, go ahead, Jason.
All I can reiterate is that it's an inappropriate use of public tax dollars to provide a service like that on private property, and that's what we're talking about here is private property.
Is there a way around it?
Jason?
You could condemn it and declare it a public right-of-way, but that'd take probably till next year.
I take the mayor's word at the fact that if there's a problem, we're gonna take care of it, so, thank you.
Yep, thank you. And yes, Ron, we will get it taken care of. Let's go to Alderwoman Patty Martenson.
Yes, what about the manager of the mobile home park? Can he do, like, emergency repairs and ask for reimbursement later?
Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
The management of the mobile home park can take care of the issue at any point in time that they choose to. I think the issue in this case is that the management may be unable to at this time.
Patty, you still have the floor, ma'am. Anything else? Okay, very good. Motion is to actually send this back to the Legal and Finance Committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item sixty-four, please.
Item sixty-four is approval of request to take discussion regarding audiovisual upgrades in the council chambers to the January five, two thousand and nine city council meeting without recommendation, and I would move to approve that request.
Actually, Alderman Quaker, I think what we're looking is, the motion actually continues for two weeks because we do not have the contracts back from Pratt Audio in the city attorney's office has not had the ability to review them, so...
I suddenly forgot it was January five, so I apologize. I meant to say continue for two weeks. That was my move.
I thought you did.
Okay, the motion on the floor, which is second, is to continue this item for two weeks, and at that time, just for everyone's point of clarification, can I make a recommendation to the motion maker? I would recommend, no, I take it back. We'll take it to that city council meeting, and there will be representatives from Pratt, which will give us a PowerPoint presentation. It's been six months since you've seen it, so they will, there'll be representation there at that meeting. With that, let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item came to the council from Legal and Finance, and there was no attachment, or there was, we didn't have the information then. It would seem to me that this should go through the regular process, and it should be scrutinized at Legal and Finance first, and not just come to the council. That's where it started. The information wasn't linked at Legal and Finance. My, I would make a substitute motion that we take this item to Legal and Finance whenever the information is available.
Okay, very good. We have a substitute motion and a second to send this to Legal and Finance. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We're on to the Public Works Committee items, and let's see here, we have, I can't believe we don't have any. We're on to bids. Mr. Preston.
Thank you, Mayor. We have just the one item on the bid list for this evening, and that is for the sewer cleaning combination jet vacuum machine for water reclamation. We received four bids as listed. Staff is recommending accepting the bid from Sanitation Products an amount of two hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and thirty-four cents. That is the highest bid. The other three bids did not meet specification. Mr. Ellis and I would like to give a short briefing of why that did not meet the specification.
Mr. Ellis.
Just real briefly, again, the only bidder that met the specification turned out to be the high bidder, and it was a difference of about fifteen or sixteen thousand dollars compared to the low bidder. And our specification called for the vehicle. This is looking down on the vehicle, and these are the big trucks that you see out in the middle of the roadway cleaning the manholes. They've got the hose going down inside the manhole. These work in traffic. Our personnel are out there in traffic cleaning the sewer lines, because they're always located within the street. And the front of that... The front of the vehicle is where that, you see the circle with the square around it? That's the hose that goes down into the manhole. Our specification called for that to be located in front of the vehicle, and that protects not only the traffic out there, but it protects our person that's actually working to clean that sewer line, protects them from somebody hitting them. The other three bidders actually had that hose. It flips out to the side into oncoming traffic. It exposes our personnel to unsafe condition, and not only that, but it interrupts traffic, and it creates a potential conflict for vehicles that are trying to drive around our jet back truck. So, for that reason, we do request that the high bidder be awarded the project, and again, it's because they meet the specifications, and the other three did not.
Okay, clarification. So, the only one that actually met the qualifications are the ones you're proposing to accept, correct?
That is correct.
Very good. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroy.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that's a very important safety feature that we need to keep traffic flowing and keep our people safe. With that, I'd make a motion for approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question, Robert. In terms of the bids here, I see one, I see one of these items, one of the bidder's flexible pipe has two asterisks, and the other, the others have one, and the two asterisks means a bid bond was submitted and a money order was submitted. Can someone explain why, I mean, is that part of the requirement that they all submit money orders, and why would one bidder submit a money order and the rest would not? Was that laid out clearly in the...
Jim, can you put the bids back up on the screen, please? Thank you.
And I think I can answer the question. I think you're required to either submit a bond or a money order, and I believe that's what we're looking at, is I think flexible pipe tool selected to give a money order instead of the bond. Is that correct, Mr. Preston?
Thank you, Mayor. We do require some sort of surety that they're gonna go through with the bid once they submit it, and so it's either the money order or the bond. I didn't specifically look at this bid, but I assume that's in the bid. I don't know if you...
Okay, so in other words, it was their option?
Yeah.
Either or.
It's just some sort of surety.
Okay, Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir. Okay, very good. Let's go to, I don't have any other lights. Everybody keeps disappearing on me. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval of the bid to Sanitary Products, Inc. for an amount of two hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and thirty-four cents. Any further discussion on that motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are on to item number sixty-five A, and we'll go to Alderman Sam Quaker, and that's the RFP for the city auction. Alderman Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll read this into the agenda. Item sixty-five A is RFP process for the annual city auction. The reason I put this on the agenda, normally I try to go through the committee process over this. It was just brought to my attention over the weekend, and the RFP that was put out or distributed for the annual city auction, the contract, it would be a three-year contract, had a typo in it in terms of the date, and then, in my view, it's also a bit unclear as to what services specifically are being requested, and I'm not sure of the amount, but I believe it's a fairly significant contract. And out of respect for the process, since I added it to the agenda tonight, and it's not a published item on the agenda, it's only fair that this be sent to Legal and Finance for more discussion. So, I'm going to offer a motion to ask that this be added to the next Legal and Finance agenda for a presentation and an update.
Okay, do we have a second? Do we have a second? Seeing no second, I'm gonna go to Jason Green just for clarification. Jason, did you understand what the motion on the floor was?
My understanding was that it was to refer the item to Legal and Finance.
Right. Okay.
The, I think the RFP requests proposals be submitted by January nine, so the deadline would have come and gone by that time.
Okay, very good. Motion dies for lack of a second. Further discussion? I'm gonna go back to Alderman Quaker. You still have the floor, sir.
I probably shouldn't have made a copy for everybody. I wanna be clear what we're talking about here. The RFP that was sent out to auctioneers all over the area said the deadline was Thursday, January nine. There is no Thursday, January nine, and I want everyone to know that, you know, that there, that this is a fair process. It's not been predetermined as to who's gonna get it. In order to ensure that it's a fair process, we probably need to republish the RFP process, and also make sure that it's more clear. So, I, that's why I brought it forward, and so I regret that I didn't make copies for everybody, but I just wanna explain why I'm bringing this forward, is there is absolutely a wrong date in that, and it's generating confusion as to what the requirements, what the requirements are, and also if you read the RFP, it isn't clear as to what services are being requested, and this is a three-year thing.
Okay, Mr. Preston, do you wanna go through the request for proposals?
Thank you, Mayor. What this is, I've got up here, when do we go to the, we call it a request for proposals. Essentially, we're trying to obtain quotes to get the best deal for the city here. What we do is we send out, place this into the...
When you do that, put it up on the screen, please. Thank you.
Probably oughta get the date in there.
Do just a little bit more if you would, Mr. Preston. There you go, thank you.
Read that or not, but essentially, this is a notice that we put in the paper. You see the dates we put in there, the sixteenth and the twenty-sixth of December. Notice hereby given that the City Rapid Cities requests proposal for auctions, for the annual city auction, inquiries concerning requests for proposals can be directed to Jenna Miller, accounting clerk, and her phone number. Request for proposal will be accepted till four P.M. Mountain Time.
Mountain daylight time, yeah.
Yeah, that's wrong. Should be Mountain Standard Time. January fifth, two thousand nine, finance office, et cetera. The polls will be publicly open and read at that time. What Mr. Quaker is talking about is, in addition to that, we do send letters out to, essentially, a number of auctioneers in the area, and I don't have that list, and I don't know how many, but we do send that out on this. You'll see the last sentence in the paragraph. We propose it to the city finance office by four o'clock on Thursday, January ninth, and that's what he is referring to. It should be Friday, January ninth.
Okay.
Is there any questions on that?
Nope. Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor.
Thank you. I just, I just think the best way to preserve the integrity of the process is to, most likely, is just to start over with the RFP process and also add more details to what services are being requested. This is a three-year contract. I don't know the amount of the contract in the past, but I'm going to make a safe assumption that it's significant, and I had just simply, I had just simply asked that we be able to discuss it at Legal and Finance, and the only reason that I brought it up tonight is that I just received the concern over the weekend, and as has been stated, the ninth is coming up in a few days. So, perhaps someone else can offer that motion, but I do believe that we still do have an issue that needs to be addressed.
Okay, further discussion. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
I'd agree that we should just send out making, correcting the dates. It would be confusing to people. They don't know whether it's Thursday or whether it's Friday, and it would just seem appropriate. And since Mr. Quaker's not talking about looking at all RFPs, which is kind of what I thought when we started this discussion, but just this specific one, I'd make a motion that we, that we start this process over with a correct date.
What do we...
And if there's some problems with, are there, in the second week or something like that, you could share that with me, but otherwise, I think it just needs to be started over so people have the correct dates.
Okay, just for clarification, so you would have a motion to direct staff to republish the...
Yes.
Republish the RFPs.
That's so. That's exactly. Thank you very much. Your words are right out of the mine.
Okay.
He's good at that.
We have a motion and a second to direct staff to republish the request for RFPs for the city auction. Further discussion on that motion. Alderman Olson, was there anything else that you had? Well, the dates are gonna change, so, don't worry. Yeah, it'll be later, so, it'll be just be basically a new RFP sent out. Okay, let's go to, let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my question would be, does that impact the timing in terms of giving them enough time to get RFPs back? That would be one question. I guess another comment would be, Sam, I agree, it's kind of confusing, but, you know, as I read this, it says, you know, the date is wrong. It's clearly wrong. Thursday is not the ninth, but the last sentence on there says, if you have any questions, please contact the city finance office. If someone can take the time to call you, I mean, why not take the time to call and call the number that it says to clarify? I mean, I'm in support of clarifying it and sending out something new to keep the integrity of the process, but I think that's pretty simple, as long as it doesn't impact the date in which the auction will be held. If it doesn't, I think this is a pretty simple fix.
Mr. Preston, will it impact the auction date?
No, sir. No, it won't. The auction date is actually the second Saturday in June.
Okay, very good. Further discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger.
Thank you, Mayor. Jim, the first sheet that you put up on the screen, was that the notification that was published?
Mr. Preston.
Yes, sir, it is. That is the one we put in the paper under the legal notices.
And that one, I mean, to me, that one's very clear. It's four P.M., January ninth, two thousand and nine. The second one that you, the one that you just removed was just a courtesy letter you sent to the auctioneers.
Yeah.
So, you know, I, personally, we're talking about publication, and the publication is correct. It was just a courtesy letter that was sent to the auctioneers that they get every year, and I mean, I don't see any problem. I don't know why we'd have to republish this. That's my opinion.
Thank you, sir. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Preston, how many auctioneers did it go out to?
Mr. Preston?
As I said before, I don't know the exact number. I know there's a number of them. I can have that count.
I just thought maybe a phone call, just to call and just say, hey, listen, it was Friday the ninth, not Thursday. My only concern would be the publication. I mean, you're having some people expect it and have theirs in, and, you know, it's already publicized or noticed publicly. I don't know that that's gonna create an issue over the long run, but I'm okay either way.
I believe that any of the RFPs, if they've been received, can be held on since, and opened at that time. Is that correct, Mr. Green? If we've received an RFP up to this point, it can be held?
Since there is no legal requirement to advertise for any proposals in the first place, absolutely, we can hold those and consider them with the rest.
Alderman Wyffenbach, anything else, sir? Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
I think there's a couple of good points made. The first one was the publication in the paper. That's the main one, and the issue with, if you can make a phone call to a councilman, but you didn't make it to the people that actually are doing the process, and it has a phone number right below if you do have a question, I think it's easily answered. I could do it, whatever the council decides, but it seems like it's pretty cut and dry. I did second the motion, but it sounds like we're good to go, and it takes a little bit of common sense to look at a date and make sure it's done right.
Okay, motion on the floor is direct staff to go out and re-advertise the RFPs for the auction. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion? Okay, let's do a roll call.
Olson?
Aye.
Kroger? Costello?
No.
Hadcock?
No.
LaCroy?
No.
Martenson?
No.
Wyffenbach?
Aye.
O'Kreppke?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Quaker? Five to five.
Five to five. The chair will vote aye. We'll go ahead and send him out. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we're going to item number sixty-six, and Mr. Ellis.
Very brief, two updates to report on. The first is Canyon Lake Restoration Bypass Project. Game Fishing Parks recently opened bids on that, and the city's contribution of $315,000 out of the $400,000 that was obligated will be used to award that contract. Total cost to the city on that project thus far is $324,750. It sounds like some of that money will be going back to the 2012 fund before this is all finished. The second project I have to report on is the Parking Ramp Structure, Block Seventy-Five across Railroad Tracks. There was a change order that was approved recently for $2,478, and that leaves a contingency of a little over $111,000 for that project. And that concludes the report.
Okay, any discussion on that motion or on that report? Let's go to Alderman Bill Ocrebkey.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Prognosis on when the parking ramp will be completed?
Fifteenth of December, or January.
So, just a couple of weeks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I would just urge my colleagues, this coming Saturday is the dedication of the New Doll Center, and I would certainly urge you to come to this wonderful new facility and see the excellent way...
Two Saturdays.
Oh, excuse me, thanks, Brad. It's two Saturdays. It's a wonderful facility, you'll be very impressed, and I think it's going to be a wonderful contribution to the arts and cultural life of Rapid City.
Yeah, very good, thank you. And let's see, let's look at a calendar here real quick. That is the seventeenth of January, correct? Okay, very good. Any further discussion? Chair will look for motion to acknowledge your report.
Go.
We have a motion and a second to acknowledge your report. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. That does take us to the public hearing items, items sixty-seven through eighty-six. The chair will look for a motion to open the public hearing for comments on items sixty-seven through eighty-six, please.
I guess.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Now, we do leave the public hearing open till the end of this segment. Let's see here, chair needs to ask if any item needs to be removed from the consent, public hearing consent calendar, continued public consent calendar. Okay, so the chair, very good. Chair would look for a motion to approve the continued public hearing consent items, items sixty-seven through eighty-three, please, inclusive.
Some of...
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Motion on the floor is to approve the consent calendars, items sixty-seven through eighty-three inclusive. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. That does take us to the end of the public hearing consent items. Chair will look for a motion to close the public hearings on items sixty-seven through eighty-six.
Some of...
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. See, we have no consent public hearing items, so that does take us to the non-consent public hearing items, item eighty-four through eighty-six, and we will go to, let's see, I think that is Alderman Ron Wyfembach, and he'll read in item number eighty-four, please. Or, what did I say, Ron? Ron Kroger, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Number eighty-four is a request by Spurlock Consulting Incorporated for Riper for variance to subdivision regulations to weigh the requirement to install pavement, curb, gutter, sidewalk, streetlight conduit, water, and sewer along sixty-six-foot wide private drive and utility easement to reduce the width of the access easement from forty-five feet to twenty feet, and to weigh the requirement to install pavement, curb, gutter, sidewalk, streetlight conduit, water, and sewer along the access easement as per chapter sixteen point one-six of the Rapid City Municipal Code. I would move to deny without prejudice at the applicant's request.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny without prejudice. Was that at the applicant's request?
Correct.
Okay, I didn't have that on my notes here. Okay, discussion on that motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item eighty-five, please.
Item number eighty-five is a request by Renner and Associates for Doug Nois for variance to the subdivision regulations to weigh the requirement to install sidewalk along Clark Street, to weigh the requirement to construct sewer, water, streetlight conduit, sidewalk, asphalt, and curb and gutter along Fairmont Street, or Fairview Street as per chapter sixteen point one-six of the Rapid City Municipal Code located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Clark Street and Forest Hills Drive and Fairview Street. I would move to deny without prejudice at the applicant's request.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny item eighty-five. Let's see, without prejudice at the applicant's request. Discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item eighty-six, please.
Item eighty-six is second reading of ordinance fifty-four thirty-seven, ordinance amending seventeen point oh-six of chapter seventeen of the municipal code for rezoning within the described property as requested by TSP, Inc. for Black Hills Corp. for a rezoning from general ag district to office commercial district located south of Katron Boulevard and east of Tartan Court. Recommendation is to continue this item to February two, two thousand and nine. Council me, and that is my motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this item to the February second, two thousand and nine meeting. Any discussion on that motion, on the continuation motion? Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyfembach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can Marcia give us an explanation of why we're continuing this?
Sure, Marcia.
Thank you, Ms. Alkins.
Okay, anything else? Let's, oh, Karen disappeared on me, okay. Okay, motion on the floor is to continue this item to the February second meeting. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Mr. Preston, bill list, item eighty-seven, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The bill list the council has on attached to their agenda totals $2,765,000. Two million, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars and eight cents. With the motion, I'd like the motion maker to include authorize the finance office to prepare a treasurer's check in amount of $383,580 payable to First American Title Company, and this three hundred and eighty-three, five eighty, has to do with the land purchase near the Plaguehorn Canyon with Rapid City's area school.
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the bill list and also authorize the finance office to issue a cashier's check. Discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just curious as to why the bill list, there was no bill list linked.
I'm sorry, what?
The question was, is there a reason there was no bill list that was linked?
This was not linked?